Challenging time like this one where we are faced with not having medicine that could cure immediately that one or vaccine and so on and of us. But anxiety and other aspect will not win the coronavirus. The coronavirus will be win by the fact that we mobilize our scientific team, we mobilize our support, our financial, technical means, but at the same time, having at each individual level the required behavior to prevent the disease and if it happens, forbidden to make sure that we have the required behavior that will stop the virus from spreading. I just want to assure you that your leadership at country level and at global level, all the head of agencies here and globally, we are all taking the required measures because your safety and your security are topmost priority for all of us. We do have some meetings that have set up measures that you need to observe. We are doing it in a close partnership with the government because as you know, security of UN staff independence starts and is first and foremost with our first and foremost with the host government. We are also very pleased to say that the government has a clear contingency plan and will do whatever it takes to support the successful implementation of the contingency plan. The UN also is finalizing its contingency plan. And in all your single agencies, you do have business continuity plans that will help us stay safe, secure, but at the same time, keep on delivering for the people in Rwanda, leaving no one behind. So this town hall is your time to discuss, to raise your concern, to raise your anxiety, to provide solution and suggestion for that together, we can strengthen this team approach and teamwork to overcome this coronavirus. I do have hope, I strongly believe that together, both locally and globally, we'll manage, as mankind has always done, to overcome this coronavirus and go back to normal business and normal work. Some measures have been taken in your business continuity plan as well as for the government, including leaving, working remotely, including taking required measures that I'm sure our COVID-19 doctor Mwenga will come to. So I just wanna say that, I'll give the focus to Mwenga to give us a brief overview on what's going on both globally and locally. What are the measures that we are taking to keep you safe and secure and deliver? What are the things that you must know about this coronavirus one before anything happens? And what are the preventive measures as well as the other measures that we need to take? I have shared with you a link which is a powerful resources for all what you'd need to know. It is an important link that give you answers to a variety of questions that you might have. Of course, as a collective leadership, we'll continue to provide you update on the measures, on the communicate from the government and the communicate from the designated official and resident coordinator to keep you awake and to keep you really updated, to keep you abreast of what's happening. I can assure you also that we'll use at utmost, while almost always preserving the privacy of colleagues, we still will keep you abreast of everything. We'll be transparent, we'll say to you the truth because even very difficult truth should be said if we are accountable leaders, if you are leaders to whom you can bestow your trust and you can bestow your way of leading us in this challenging time. We owe you all the required information, we owe you trust, we owe you transparency and we owe you to give you the required information while at the same time, as I mentioned, preserving any privacy that is necessary. So this is my message to you. We have hope, we keep on doing whatever it will take with the host government and the international community and the UN at HQ and in various capital cities of our important organization so that you keep safe, secure, you, your family, your friends, so that we can really stay and deliver and make sure that we overcome this threat to humanity. Not only a medical threat, but also an economic and socio-economic threat. I read yesterday that 421 million students are out of schools. We also have resources, as you can see, they also say that even the projected growth of 2.9% globally might drop up to 1.4%. Exports are dropping, Wall Street and other aspect of these financial markets are dropping. This could have a toll also in the way that UN would have access to resources to keep on implementing its business. But let's focus first of all foremost on the safety and security of your family and the staff. I wish you all the best and we are here to answer your question. But before that, let me hand it over to Dr. Mwenga to work us through this coronavirus and some important step that staff might be aware of in order to behave properly so that we can stop this coronavirus and keep safe and secure. Thank you very much colleagues.
Good afternoon colleagues. And thank you to UN resident coordinator for the opportunity to be able to discuss the coronavirus pandemic that is facing the globe. I'm sure most of us know that this disease outbreak occurred at the end of 2019 and took us into 2020. It started in one country but now is all over the globe on every continent. As of the 15th, globally there were more than 1,005, 153,517 cases that were confirmed to have been infected with this new virus called COVID-19. Unfortunately, there are also people who have succumbed to the virus and the number estimated at 5,735. The World Health Organization has indicated that the risk is very high globally and also regionally for the outbreak to affect any of us and all of us across the globe. So what are the measures that's being expected to be done globally? Some of the, some of the strategies that we have to look at critically in each of the countries, in each of the districts, provinces, communities is that we have to stop transmission of the infection from one person to the other, whether within the household or within the community or wherever they are. Yes, people may get the infection but one of the primary goals we want is to stop the spread from one person to the other. And in doing that, in the countries, we are working to ensure that there is early identification of the person who has the infection and if the identification is done, the person is put away from where he has opportunity to infect others. So we are here in terms of isolation, that a person is isolated. This is basically to put the person apart from others to reduce the chances of the person passing the infection to others. We also have to care for people who get infected very early. From the evidence which has been shown, majority of the people are going to have mild illness and may not require any hospitalization. Unfortunately, there is a small percentage that may need to have a hospital care and then even much smaller percentage, about 3%, who will need critical care to be in the hospital because of respiratory complications and others. Another important issue for us is to communicate the critical risks and also the events that are happening and also to counter misinformation that is happening during this outbreak. Here in Rwanda, I think we are aware that the government has put in a lot of measures to prevent and prepare and be ready for coronavirus. Unfortunately, we have recorded the first case and subsequently, there have been four additional cases. So we have now moved from being in the phase of preparedness and readiness to being in the phase of response where as much as possible, the country working with different partners is trying to contain the spread. So during this time, we know that staff will have different questions, they will have different concerns about what will happen. This is one of the purposes of this town hall. We have had different discussions in the different agencies and you've had opportunity to ask, this is another opportunity. We have the same two colleagues who've been to your different agencies, Dr. Elizabeth and Dr. Alfred. And so when it comes to the questions and answers, you be free to ask the questions in English, in French and Kenya Rwanda. What would we like staff to take home? As much as possible, we should all take personal measures. One of the most effective things is the hand washing, which here in Rwanda, we were already doing when we had the threat of Ebola. So we continue as much as possible with the hygiene of frequent hand washing with water and soap for an appropriate duration. And I understand there's the hand wash challenge that even the head of state has asked people to participate in. If you do not have the facilities with soap and water, please be able to use sanitizer. You've also seen measures of what to do if you're sneezing to cover, to cover with a tissue which you immediately put in a closed bin or to flex your elbow and use that as much as possible. Avoid coughing and sneezing into people's faces. Avoid being around people who are ill if you don't have to be and you're not part of the care of those people. Keep social distancing at least a meter away from individuals and we are encouraging that whether in the, in the meetings or places where we are working to keep a distance of at least one meter between, between ourselves. And if we're ill, we are best advised to be careful of our interaction with the outside. If we have symptoms that relates to fever, dry cough, sore throat, what, what do we do and we think we have been in contact? At national level, we have been given phone number 114 to be able to call immediately to get their assistance that we need. We also have our agency guidelines that we need to follow, on who we need to inform, should we be unwell or should we become an alert where we are being investigated for COVID-19? And I would encourage all staff that as much as possible, we try to call the numbers which are provided nationally and also the numbers which are provided by the United Nations in terms of the UN medical services and the focal points in our particular agencies. This will help facilitate that we are transported to facilities in a safe manner that does not have bearing on spreading infection should we be infected. And if we test positive, what should we do? Again, we are following the national guidelines for care of people who have confirmed infection with COVID-19. Some may be cared for in a different manner. Some may be isolated in particular places where the government has identified and depending on the severity of the illness, they are different places where people can be cared for. At the end of the day, I would like to join Ford in indicating that we remain calm, we remain vigilant, we put the measures that we need to have in place, we become supportive of each other, we refrain from information which may be misleading or false, stick to the facts that are available. The facts are there on the Rwanda Biomedical Center website. There is also facts which are available on the World Health Organization website and the United Nations have also got specific websites where we can get the information that we need. This virus is with us today but it won't be with us forever. It can still be, it can still be overcome and it's all of us together that will work to overcome this outbreak. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mwenga. In the website, you already have a chat that you can click on and we already have free here. You already have three person who have put forward questions. So you can type your question. In the meantime, I received from the ASO one question which is related to the activation of the BCP. The question is, in case we need a signature of supervisor, senior management, how can we arrange while working remotely? Or should we hold or work without a signature? The second is, working remotely means staying at your own duty station, Kigali or other cities in Rwanda? Or are you want staff allowed to work wherever they want outside of Rwanda? If the UN staff already purchased a ticket, flight for leave, should I cancel the travel? Is there any possibility to start border restriction, isolation in Rwanda? So I think that this is a very important question. But for the business continuity plan, I think each agency has its own business continuity plan that gives you all the required measures to have the continuity of our business. For example, me when I'm even without crisis, when I'm aware, Maculay has an electronic signature. If I approve it by email, just put the electronic signature and it is approved. Some agency just have a code on their approval by email. There's a specific code that the head of agency will, will approve. I do think that for that question, I would really refer that person to talk to, to, to talk to the head of agency that will explain their BCP. But yes, there are means to continue doing that with electronic version, approval in the system, approval by electronic signature given, approval by email using code. So that's what I wanted to say. For the second one, which is your own duty station, when you are appointed in your letter, the duty station is mentioned. Should be Kigali if it is the case, it could be Roubavu, it could be elsewhere. But the mechanism through which you are committing could be also something that you could discuss with your supervisor. But normally, your contract do not mention Rwanda. It will mention your duty station. Why it is mentioning your duty station? Because even if you are traveling from Kigali to Roubavu, Roubavu is not your duty station, you'll be allowed to DSA. That's why they are not putting duty station Rwanda. Your duty station is where you have your physical office and then the manager could also discuss if there are any other way of flexibility that is given the agency let, it's not the designated official. So for the, for the ticket, I think Rwanda already has taken some measures for all, for the people coming from the countries with what we call community spread coronavirus. I think that the doctor Mwenga could answer that. That is the countries in which measures have been taken either to quarantine or have self-monitor based on what would be your symptom upon arrival. But already many countries have restriction. Even the US, they have closed for a month flights to Europe. Morocco has closed for the flight to France by boat and by any other mean. Senegal, they have also closed for traveling by sea to come to visit Senegal and so on and so. So many countries are taking measures. So it would be good, there is a website that gives you all the list of countries with, you know, the community spread coronavirus and what are the restrictions. I recommend you to go to the website on the UN personnel that always gives you that elements as well as the RBC website here in Rwanda that could provide you information regarding your travel. I don't know if I can unmute head of agency wanna jump in. But anyway, this is the answer for the BCP referred to your agency. And for the travel, this is the pieces of, these are the pieces of advice I wanna give unless Dr. Mwenga can come also come.
For grading of countries that have reported coronavirus, they've been categorized in where they are imported cases. That is the cases which are there came from another country where coronavirus was circulating and they got the infection from there. And so now you record that this country has one or two or four cases but they are imported into the country. But when the infection starts to spread from person to person within the country, then the country moves to where we say there is community transmission. And as UNRC said, a number of countries are restricting entry of people coming from countries where there is community transmission. Then there are countries who are indicating that if you arrive from a country that has community transmission, you immediately be put in quarantine. Some of them, the quarantine is going to be self-quarantine. For some, it will be in institutions. Over this weekend, a number of countries were also counseling visas and travel. Some are doing it for foreigners, some are doing it for people coming from specific countries. The UNRC had also sent a communication in terms of UN missions from countries where there is community transmission to avoid going to those countries and also to avoid people coming from those countries because they may not be able to do their work. They may end up for 14 days in another place instead of coming to do the mission. And this has happened in some of the countries. So for your leave travel, I would advise that you really see where you're going, what the prevailing status of that country is and the advisory that you will get from UNDSS may be helpful for you to decide whether to go to that particular destination or to wait till things have cooled down before traveling for that particular leave show.
Let me also add that this is something that we discussed during the, the UNCT. We discussed it and I think what we say that no one can prevent the staff from exercising, you know, entitlements to, to leave. But as you know, also there are two things that is attached to that. One is the time to take the leave will be also at the discretion of the supervisor because depending on the, the work to be done. The second is the information that Dr. Mwenga talked about. I think I know at least two staff who said that they don't wanna face this issue of being quarantined, so they postponed their leave. But that one you can discuss also if you're supervisor. The other one, which is a very difficult as well question that we receive is a colleague saying that now that school are closed, some parents are considering, you know, bringing their children into Rwanda. What would be the measures that the UN could do to support them? Because some children arriving are minor by definition and having them go through serious, you know, quarantine or being also in the measures that have been taken locally might be very stressful. So is there any support that UN can do in that matter?
First and foremost, the guidelines for quarantine globally made in such a way that you want to preserve dignity of people and not make people unnecessarily uncomfortable while trying to stop the spread of the disease. So for Rwanda, the guidelines are there on where people are going to, are going to be held and how they are going to be transported. The UN working with the government can liaise with the national authorities to see where the staff is, where the child is and see if there is any further support that can be given as needed. They usually contact numbers of people that you can contact while undergoing either isolation or quarantine. And in addition, in the UN contingency plan that UNRC was talking about, we will also include telephone numbers for when we have issues related to medical symptoms or where we have issues related to any other type of support. So on a case-by-case basis, as issues come up, we'll see how the UN can best assist staff and their households to be comfortable during the different processes that we have to abide by. However, we have to be clear that the UN does not have a separate process from the national process in terms of people being isolated and people being quarantined and where that actually happens. That is the host government that is guiding those decisions.
Just wanna add that if that case happens, maybe it would be good to inform us so that we can see also what support can be done in that matter. So there's another one, all this are medical, eh? I'm sorry. So is it worth to generalize the use of masks?
No, I'm sure you've seen a lot of guidance that people wearing masks indiscriminately because they are scared of getting the virus is not a very useful use of the mask. However, it is advisable to be able to have some because should you develop symptoms, it would be best for you to use a mask so that you are the one who's not spreading the infection to other people. As you know, there is also shortage of personal protective equipment globally and the focus really should be as much as possible for things to be used by people who most need them, like health workers, people who are caring for confirmed cases and also the cases themselves.
I think that for the mask as well, I think you have read that and yesterday, the RBC representative mentioned it in the TV show that masks are meant for people who have the symptoms or the head workers who are in direct contact or people who might be in direct contact without them knowing, like at the airport you have seen it or the medical doctors and others. I think it's reply also to one question. But the other one that we are having is, has the government activated the national self-isolation? Why, what is the point for UN agency to do this alone? I think she's, he's talking about self-quarantine. Or isolation even.
Before I call Elizabeth to indicate that, I, I, can I?
Yeah, of course you can.
There's a question on how long it takes for symptoms. There's a question on how long it takes for symptoms of the COVID-19 to appear, which is the period which we say from the time of the infection, the incubation period. The range from different studies has been about two to fourteen days with an average of about a week, and some studies are now showing as early as uh five days for symptoms to appear. They will be outliers in averages where for some people it may have taken longer, but in general, most of the people who are uh infected, it, they will show symptoms within fourteen days. And that is why fourteen days is being used as the period of time where people stay either in quarantine if they have no symptoms or in isolation if they are symptomatic.
Uh, good afternoon colleagues. Um, Elizabeth, I know we were together most of the time last week and the situation has changed. And currently, I know maybe the question is coming with reference to the current situation where there are some of us who are contacts and we have contacts at different levels. There are high-risk contacts and there are some people maybe who are contacts but uh low risk, and there are different measures that are supposed to be taken. So there is self-quarantine, self-quarantine where that is for high-risk contacts, which, which usually happen uh in that there could be quarantine in a facility for the very close contact, EG, uh household members, and there are those who will be on self-quarantine where maybe you didn't have that close personal contact with an individual, but you are still considered at risk. And that self-quarantine entails you being able to be, uh, it can be done maybe even in a house setup, but the person is not supposed to share items with other household members. And they're supposed to be allowed for a particular period, like within the fourteen days, and they're supposed to be reporting, like taking temperature uh for, within that period of fourteen days. In case somebody develops symptoms and they're supposed to wear a mask and call the number that is uh, that is given. There are guidelines on quarantine, on self-quarantine on WHO website, and also RBC will be also having that uh guidance, so you can also refer. But there are also those particular contacts who are just doing self-monitoring. You could not have been in close contact with the person, but maybe because as a, by virtue of sharing a building or an office, there, there is an element of risk, but because the risk is not as high, these people are supposed to self-monitor and report when symptoms uh arise. So there's a difference between the self-monitoring and the self-quarantine. Self-quarantine, you are limiting the movement. You're not even supposed to be moving around.
Yes. And the UN is not setting up a separate system, the UN is following the national guidance. And when we have any measures, we are doing it in collaboration with the national government.
Yes. I think that uh, there is a document that is also very good on that, which is seeking care for coronavirus disease. And you need to know that uh, as it was explained by the two expert in, 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 in medical issues, that isolation and quarantine are different. Isolation is for someone who is sick and focusing on preventing spread. Quarantine is for someone who is well but has been exposed to the virus and focusing on close monitoring to detect if they become infectious. As someone becomes infectious in the very early stage of symptoms starting, in many cases, the two are treated similarly. That's very, and then for the isolation, it was also very clear. Uh, restricted activities outside your home except for getting medical care, do not go to work, school. We can share, that's something that already Dr. Mwinga has explained. Uh, so that's what I wanted to say. And uh, if you remain for the quarantine, if you remain symptom-free for fourteen days after your expression, then you can resume normal activity. That's what is in the guidelines of these two measures. So uh, there is another one which is saying, uh, why self, so it was explained, what is expected after two weeks, we also explain. So there is, please let us know what the procedures for UN staff stuck abroad. The country am currently banned all arrival to and departure from its territory. So for, for Rwanda, uh, it's uh, it's very clear, we have discussed it, and we say that uh, it is uh, the, the security clearance will not be guaranteed uh for a person coming from countries where we have community spread disease, uh, that is what is going on. So the way I would suggest is, as we are in some countries working remotely, it happened to one staff, it was not related to COVID, but he was in one duty station and he was uh, his life was threatened, so we put him in another duty station and that person was working remotely from that other duty station. So there are measures that need to be discussed if there are specific case, maybe the two uh designated officials will discuss. But the issue is not the UN. It's not me, or these are measures taken by sovereign governments. If a sovereign government is saying, uh, this uh person could not enter, or if it, that person enters, it will be quarantine, I can't go, you know, against the measures. I know that there is a very difficult situation that happened to Madagascar just this morning, when people were boarding Madagascar did not issue a quarantine measure for people flying from France. But by the time the plane landed, they had the measures. So they were given two options, either to go back with the same plane to France or being self-quarantined in, in Madagascar. So some did take the want to go back, the others did not do that. So that's what I can answer on that. Yes, there was this answer saying that, could you confirm that if I understood your point clearly, work from home is only allowed in the duty station, but we can discuss a detail with supervisors? That's what I told you, the issue is that every single agency has its own BCPs. And the BCP Business Continuity Plan explains exactly what they want, how they wanna do it, to work remotely. There are essential staff that could be called on duties, they know themselves, there are the other staff, the managers of the agency will let you know if you have clear, clear, you know, ways of dealing with that. They can allow committing, but that one it is up to the agency to look at the way that they will be doing without disrupting their way of working and without also being obliged to pay DSA. Because if you are in another uh area which is not your duty station and you are allowed to work there, they might have also an impact on the uh daily subsistence allowance. That's what I can say on, on that matter.
Risk mitigation for spread within the UN family. For risk mitigation for spread, we have to look at it not just within the UN family, but within the country, within the households, within our uh districts. The message is uh the same that we had indicated earlier, that one, we all need to be very self-conscious of uh hygiene practices that we indicated. We also need to be very self-conscious of being very quick to identify illness with the specific symptoms of fever, cough, uh sore throat that may indicate that we have the infection, and when we have the infection, we call, we seek the appropriate medical advice. If we think that we have been in contact with someone who is infected, the government is doing very active contact tracing of anyone who is confirmed, the government will get a list of everyone who is considered a high risk and the person will be contacted and given the measures of what to do. And close contact, we have indicated, it's being in close proximity with a person, it's where we're asking social distancing, a meter or two apart if you can be from other people. If we've been in an environment that requires to be cleaned specifically because of possible contamination, that is also being put in place in collaboration with the Rwanda Biomedical Centre. So the contamination of areas which may be potentially uh having the virus, but most of the measures are what we need to do ourselves in our families.
I think that there is also a question that if you get the virus and get proper medication care and get healed, if you get out uh to the, can you get out to the normal business? Your usual business? Can you go back if you are treated and you are healed?
Yes.
Or are you still prone to COVID-19?
So here, uh, we are talking about will a person be immune to getting the infection again? This is a new disease, so we don't know exactly how long the immunity lasts. Normally, when a person has an infection and they get over it, their body will have mounted a fight against the infection and will be able to hold off the infection for a period of time. So for diseases like malaria, you will know that maybe for six months, if um outside exposure, I may be immune, but after that I may not be immune. For influenza, it may be for a season. For this particular new disease, there isn't enough evidence to say how much, you will only be able to tell if people start getting re-infected and then you try to measure the period, how long did it take for a person who had had the disease to again uh get the infection?
Again, I think uh that was uh the medical question, but I can give you at least what I witnessed, the case of Senegal. You cannot be released on if we are, they are not doing four times in a proper number of days, the, the test and that is negative. So if you are discharged, that it means that at least at that time, you will be no longer can get, I don't know, later on, but at least for the first insect, infection that has been treated in Senegal, the protocol uh is saying that we need four uh tests, I think it's six days. Yeah, four tests negative uh that may, you may be discharged. So for Ebenezer House staff, if in two weeks they don't have any sign and symptom, does this mean that they were not contaminated from the first identi-, identified case?
Yes, uh, so you're asking for the staff in Ebenezer House, what happens after fourteen days without symptoms? Yeah, actually, after fourteen days without symptoms, you are released from quarantine, whether you are doing quarantine or self-monitoring, because the incubation period for the uh virus between like the time you get the virus or you get contaminated to the time you get disease is actually within fourteen days, and fourteen days is actually on the higher side. So it was put on the higher so that you are able to have that, to reduce chances of you missing, uh, missing it if it's there. So after fourteen days, then you'll be okay.
In the past, with Ebola preparedness at UN level, some international staff has expressed wish to receive treatment from else countries in most cases, their own countries. If they happen to be unfortunately infected, would this still be applicable in the case of COVID-19?
So the, the UN has guidelines for medical evacuation of staff, like they were for Ebola. There are also guidelines for medical evacuation of staff related to COVID-19. And there are certain conditions which have to be met, and it's also on a case-by-case basis. First, let me reiterate that most of the cases that are infected are going to be mild disease for, for which even hospitalization will not be indicated. For those who may have severe disease, the worst-case scenario that will have critical illness will be related to can they be ventilated safely? In the briefing of the uh diplomatic corps, the Minister of Health indicated the capacities for intensive care units in the country, but we've seen in some countries that these capacities are being overwhelmed by the number of cases. So with the assessment of what is the capacity, the medical service capacity in the country, decisions will then be arrived at whether there is qualification for UN medical evacuation related to COVID-19. So there is an assessment that is done of countries to see, do they have capacity to be able to treat critically ill patients?
I think that the guidelines are very uh clear, of course, the, even this morning we discussed and uh Dr. Mwinga and, and uh we'll look at some um aspect that are more um to the nitty-gritty of the, of your question. But the guidelines were saying we need to consider the following aspect. First of all, do we have intensive care unit number three? So that's important. Second, it's case-by-case that will be discussed with the UN Medical and the, and the, and the WHO will be supporting. As you can see in the guidance, it's for WHO, UN staff and all even the partners that are frontline, frontline workers. Third element that is important is you need to know the uh transportation, the airlift, both from the country of origin and the recipient countries. Many countries do not accept now, and what I've read, I'm not a medical doctor, but I read that we do have airlift for severe case, this is also another element, severe case that could be airlift, it is on the guidance, but you need from the country of origin, you need the consent, you need the authorization. And as you may know also, many countries are, are far from Rwanda, so you cannot have a flight without having stopover somewhere. And that country also, many countries do not accept. So the way I see it, and I'm reading it here on the, if you are unaware, it is mentioned in other guidance that we received, that most people, more than eighty percent, will have a mild illness that will be treated even over the counter medication, acetaminophen, ibuprofen and others. So let's not panic, but it, it, Dr. Mwinga will guide us and with the UN Medical Clinic will come to the nitty-gritty of your question. But as of now, there are clear guidance on Medevac, and of course, I want to add that for evacuation, agencies are leading on that. It's important that also to, we can, as a UN will be supportive, but each agency also have its uh internal procedures, but the RC has a, has a right to sign based on the uh advice given by the uh medical authorities to say that we would sign, but it is sometimes many of agencies, and I've done it in the past, in US where many agencies, they need to get clearance also from their HQ on other aspect of this Medevac. But we'll come back with heads of agency to a nitty-gritty of this aspect of your question. But as of now, we have also clear guidance on that. Could you please tell us if there is any other UN affected in Rwanda, how about other countries? I, I, I said to, in my message to you, it's very clear, it's an internal communication. And if you read at the bottom, it's really is important that what is said within UN remain within UN. The way I'm seeing it, and I see it in one WhatsApp group, that even with that stigmatizing uh stigma on one people, even providing ID, a UN staff should not have that behavior. If you have information or other aspect, please, please liaise to your head, with your head of agency, they can liaise with us, we can, you know, confirm or not, but don't, don't ever spread uh in social media, in other aspect communication. But I told you that I owe you transparency. Here, as we speak, this is the only case, and I disclose it in my communication too. That's the case that we are having. Of course, I must also disclose, there is one uh uh close contact to another case, and so far that person is doing well, and that person also, we are monitoring, and we'll owe you the information whenever there is any other development on that case. But as we speak, there is But as we speak, there is only one UN staff, and he's doing fine, that person. Uh we talked to him uh through the the agency concern, he's doing fine, he's treated. And I'm I'm very hopeful that he will go through this diff- diff- this difficult time. For the other UN staff also, as you know, uh there is a website with the UN Medical, and I did it with the support of the agency concern and Dr. Mwenga to report the case. Every single UN staff infected should be reported in the twenty-four hours of the case happening. So we do have other cases uh in the UN. Um I I know Senegal, I know Ghana, we do have it, they are reported. So it is something, we have clear guidance on how to report it, giving all the things. But but, and I insist on that, at the same time, protecting the privacy of that UN staff. Because stigma is very dangerous in the way that we are working in the world of social media, like, you know, uh at this uh that could be spread easily uh without even knowing, you know, the nitty gritty of the fact. So we owe you transparency, we owe you communication, but we really, really call on your way of behaving regarding the use of social media, because we owe also the same privacy uh to that person. And in fact, before issuing my communicate, I do I uh liaise with the staff just to explain to him why I'm doing that. I liaise with the head of UN agency concern, and both accepted and put what they think would be fine as well to be added to to disclose and to support what we are doing. So it's fine, this is what I wanted to say on that one. How long would it take to for those tested positive to be free from the disease? Question to the RC, we have started working from home, but we don't have much control of the security guard as they are coming every day and night. Any advice for the security guard companies that may be facilitated by UNDS? What I did, uh I sent a message, Lee was outside, I sent a message to uh the uh to the security company to take some measures. They are taking preventive measures like sanitizers, washing and others. And I can give you personally what I have done with the person working in my home. What I have done with them, every single person in that, in my home, I have given him a thermometer to 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 check if they have issues. I've given them the possibility to just drop me a message if they are not feeling well, even if it's false, uh uh you know, pieces of information that they need to uh cross check. Then inform me that they will not come, if they are coughing, if they have all the uh you know, small, the small symptoms that we mentioned, the initial symptoms that we mentioned, is something that we we need to. But I think Lee is here, maybe she, we wanna add some other aspect, but we'll talk to uh the security company, we'll have meetings, and Lee is here leading us. Please, Lee, uh if you have to add as a aspect.
Good afternoon, everyone. Now, besides that, let's also keep a distance from your guard, just like your appropriate space you do in your office and at home, the same thing with your guard, you don't have to be really close to them. Uh and we contact the security companies, so they're taking their action as the, as fully set.
So now the the other one is for Dr. Mwenga again. What is Rwanda capacity to respond to COVID nineteen? Infrastructure, how many quarantine locations?
Just to share that globally, there was an assessment done to characterize or categorize countries in terms of ability and readiness to respond. And the focus was to have priority one countries, those that were had a lot of trouble with China and were most likely to get the infection, but also have the weakest health health systems. Rwanda was in not that category, was not in that category because it was indicated that Rwanda's health system is one of the strong systems on the continent. And so the ability to be able to respond to a health threat was strong. For every country, however strong your ability is, there are still things which you need to put in place for preparedness and readiness. And we are seeing what is happening in different countries with even much stronger systems. So yes, the capacity to respond is there, and the measures that Rwanda took for preparing for Ebola, the infrastructure that was put in for handwashing across different places is really serving us well. We've had a briefing where the Ministry of Health has indicated where the isolation units are and the number, the last which was before we had any case, they had been four that had been identified, and then also where people are going to be treated. Initially, it was one hospital. I'm sure there has been update in the infrastructure, and maybe one of my colleagues can uh give some more detail on that.
Uh thank you. Uh in Rwanda, uh uh we are ready uh to receive people uh suspected of having this disease. Uh currently, uh in each district hospital, we have two uh holding rooms, and we have also uh one uh treatment center that uh has been equipped uh already. And we have another uh big uh isolation center. So uh in term of uh infrastructure in Rwanda, we are ready. And then in term of equipment also, and and the and the training of healthcare providers, uh lab technicians have been trained. So uh in summary, we are ready Rwanda to to fight against this COVID nineteen. Thank you.
I think there is one aspect that we all should be aware of, and I will not name the country, but uh it's a very, it's a highly developed country. Uh given the number of case, their infrastructure is overstretched. So we just need to make sure that it will not go out of control. Uh because I haven't seen in the world, and even China, you know, they needed to build in in a weak health facilities to to cope with the number increasing number. Uh in some countries, even they are saying people should stay, and they are even now choosing whom to treat because of uh the capacity, and they are very developed countries. So let's be realistic, so far we are very fine, we keep on supporting the government and really making sure that we don't have overs- uh spread of this uh disease, that is important to 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 mention. So what's Rwanda, we have already. Dr. Mwenga, what is your first point of call in case of need? The government has one one four other hotline, is a UN clinic supporting in diagnosing the virus?
Ri- right.
You wanna say something?
Right now, the diagnosis in Rwanda is only made, is only made uh in the national reference lab. None of the other labs right now have capacity to be able to make the diagnosis. So the UN clinic is not dealing with diagnosis. All samples are taken to the appropriate lab for diagnosis. Then in terms of points of contact, yes, it's one one four, but there's also the contacts of the UN medical personnel.
Oh, seven eight two 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 oh 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 seven seven zero or seven one. I have a good mind, so. So I I see also there is a comment, and it's very right, uh we needed to do this arrangement. Maybe you are not uh fully compliance with this one meter distance. But we really want you, urge you to make sure that you are doing it. We are not uh doing what we are pushing, but it is just for, I think, for this setting, we could not do it at the UN compound. Uh does UN clinic help? I will even give a detail that was in one country that I will not disclose. Uh one of the person who has been infected went straight to your UN medical. So now it's difficult to have people coming to UN medical. As Dr. Kasonde mentioned, in all this, it was like the Ebola and other thing, there are numbers, there are procedures, just follow that. You can call the medical doctor that could direct you in what needs to be done, and you have one one four and RBC and other lab, because this is very critical that you 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 have that aspect as well. How long does it take? So we have already, does UN clinic help? We have been seeing people wearing face mask, it's already answered. Uh the process to isolate, quarantine and lock this is the same country wise. There's no particular for can you follow the guidelines, though it's fine, well noted to us. But does UNDS is ready to do in relation to the UN staff home, if the whole family is quarantined? What the UNDS is ready to do in relation to the security of UN staff home if the whole family is quarantined outside their home? That's a important one. This is a very brilliant question.
Okay, hello again. In reference to your residence, you should have a plan on how you're gonna secure your residence if nobody can stay there. Depending on residential security measures for international staff that are in place, that's already taken care of. For national staff members, that's something you'll have to discuss with your head of agency, and they can put in their own implementing measures if that happens to you. Uh but otherwise, I would have a plan of who could secure your house. Remember, if the whole family is quarantined, your house could be contaminated, so you shouldn't have people inside watching your house. But that'll have to be discussed by your agency, because that's not a blanket uh, there's not a blanket policy worldwide for that.
I also will take this opportunity to at least give you a piece that I discussed also. I I I think uh and we, in the past, we used to do it in the measures, we used to have, at least in countries where I was stationed, uh a bag, seven kilo bag that we we are ready to have with us anytime. So I think that it it would be good, uh we touch on the wood, God forbid, but let's also, if we see things that are not good at all, be prepared to have, you know, a bag for fourteen days. Because when they decide to come, sometimes they don't want to take much time. So overnight, they could come and say, you need to go with us in the ambulance. And even the colleague who has been to the hospital, he has been maintained to the hospital without even having clothes, because they don't want to have back and forth. So we needed to to have. So God forbid, we stay safe and healthy. But if you see that there are issues that you need to face for being displaced to another area for the testing or quarantine, it's better to have a a bag ready for fourteen days. Because if it is not the case, it will be difficult uh for us to get to you and give you the required um bag. So I come back from London last Wednesday, although I haven't experienced any symptom, do I need to stay? Yes.
As as much as possible, because there is community transmission going on in England, it would be best for you to self-monitor, stay in a place of your own and basically put yourself in self-quarantine for fourteen days.
And as people are walking from home, that I think it should not be, uh let us know what's the procedure of. So we already have answered that, any guidance to containing stigma particularly for you. Yeah, for the guidance to contain uh stigmas, it is first what I mentioned earlier. Staff should not keep on inquiring with the person uh, you know, tested positive, which agency, and even going to ask, is it this person or that or that person? Because all the information that you need to have will be given to you. If you are a contact, they will call on you, uh they will give you the measures that should be taken. If it is a given in a given building, the agencies in that building, as we did in Ebenezer, we take the required measures to uh, you know, uh decontaminate that building. If uh you are close contact, the aspect of being out for fourteen days and all this aspect will be also given to you. If it is also the self-monitoring, you keep on monitoring yourself and reporting back both to the UN Medical or the RBC for this arrangement that is done. So the second, it is in your hands. Don't also start putting in social media or discussing or disclosing something that we have done and said inside you. Let me tell you the truth. There is the first day it happened, a close friend, a high-level person, an ambassador, called me and say, I heard that this is what is uh this, I said to him, no, what all we all you need to to say, to know, have been disclosed. And I don't know why people are going beyond what is in the government communicate. If you are, your personality is in contact with that person, they will be in the uh in the contact list, and they will be contacted and given the required measures to be done. We don't need to disclose uh and go beyond what is uh necessary as information to behave properly and to be preventive. Third element is the social media. I think let's stop, you know, uh this 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 gentleman that we put the ID all over the Rwanda, I mean, that's beyond what is acceptable. It's not something that we we should accept. So that's something that we we are trying to do, and this is between owing you the required information and protecting the privacy of the UN staff and the UN family involved in any cases. That's what we are doing, and I think it is important that we respect that process. But Dr. Mwenga may have things to add, okay? What a situation for UN staff that was affected and elaborate further on existing risk mitigation, so I think it's done. Could you confirm if you understand your point of work, what was done? Is it advisable to travel on reassignment to Rwanda out of Rwanda? I mean, it depends on on the country of origin and the country to which you are going. As I mentioned to you earlier, we have discussed with uh Lee, and uh some countries, it is no longer under, you know, uh in the system uh approval of their clearance. It would be outside the system. Uh so we've checked the countries to make sure that we have the required information that is provided to the staff. Second thing, uh I have this this the, I have that question even from the two members of the RC office. They are saying that what happens if I sign my contract now and Rwanda is not accepting me because they have restriction on the travel? My answer was very clear. You sign the contract, from now on, you are part of the RC office. We'll find a way for you to work remotely where you are there, because you cannot travel, and wherever it is possible, then you can join us. That's my answer to that question, but I don't know if Dr. Mwenga wanna add. Is there any vaccine?
No, there is no approved vaccine for COVID nineteen. There there's research going on, trying to develop treatments, trying to develop vaccines, but these are months away.
Is there any other UN staff in Ebenezer House with COVID nineteen? To the best of my knowledge, no, that's where I will stand actually. In fact, if you look at the list of the government, you can, you can see uh the the aspect. But anyway, that's what I wanted to say. Psychological uh psychological and social support, yes, we discussed it this morning, and I'm really very uh proud to report that both Stephen Vashia and Dr. Mwenga and Lee has taken a step, and latest tomorrow, uh we'll have a retaining contract for psychological support. We have the name, we have the CVs, and there would be a contract with UNDP that will be provide the support under retaining, retaining meaning that as provide the support and the retaining, retaining meaning that as needed basis, if you need their support. Is the cost of testing kit covered by health insurance, including Zeus use by UN? I can't answer.
Currently, people are not being charged for the testing that is happening in Rwanda, it is free.
Are there self-testing kits available in the country? If yes, is it advisable to test yourself to go to the health?
There are no self-testing kits on the market. There are people who are producing rapid kits. That's kits which still need to be used in the laboratory, but will get you the results faster than the current one which is being used. Those are not yet approved for use in, in many instances. So right now, the recommended testing is the one which we have been told it will take about six hours to get the test, because it has different laboratory procedures to get from collection of the sample, the sample being processed and when it is tested.
Can someone get coronavirus more than once, you have answered me? And the second one is this, what is the indicated health facility at which staff can have, uh, medical attention?
It follows government procedure. It follows governments. Yeah, like it was said earlier, if anyone has any symptoms, they're supposed to call 114 or the UN medical clinic. And currently, for example, if someone needs the case definition and they are tested and they have COVID. For now, there is no specific different facility for them, UN. But there is a treatment center at Kenya, but where positive patients are being treated.
Yes, um, we have, as Elizabeth has said, we have one treatment center at Kenya Health Center. It is, uh, at twenty kilometers from Kigali. And, uh, for lab examination, exam, uh, there is a laboratory in Kigali where we, uh, we perform, they perform the, the test. And, um, to confirm, to confirm that, that you are really positive. Uh, there are two laboratories in Africa, in Senegal and South Africa, that is, this is for your information. But here in Rwanda, so we test and after we send, uh, in one of those, uh, refer laboratories to confirm if you are really positive.
Sorry, colleagues, we are moving back and forth.
So for validation or, so for validation of test, if you remember, a few weeks ago, there were only two labs in the African region that could, uh, test. But now most of the countries in the African region can test. The issue of sending samples to reference labs was basically to do validation of the first few positive cases to see that the standards of the lab are fine. And the thereafter, samples do not keep going to the reference lab, they continue being validated in the lab. Here in Rwanda, there are different tests being used with validation also being done in Rwanda.
So, uh, there is one questions that, uh, the other one are just comments saying that they present this one and need to act as human. But there is one question, in case of visa expiry within March or so, do you have any plan to engage with the government of Rwanda for any flexible measures, uh, from them? Some countries are offering, I don't understand. Is it the visa expiry in Rwanda? And if it is the case, I don't see any issue. Is there, in case of visa expiry within March or so, do you have any plan to engage with the government for any flexible measures from them? Because if it is visa expiry, even if the government is working, this is what they suggested. But, uh, offices are open for, you know, duties. But if it is a specific one, let's talk, you can give us the detail and we'll check what we can do on that matter. Put it off, sorry. Some colleague want to join this meeting, waiting for host approval. What is host approval? Yes. Yeah, after, I will ask Renee if they are, please send to Renee, uh, Renee, so that if there are things that they need to, to approve, no problem. All the UN staff are, 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 you know, in invited to do that. And please not also, we are recording this and we'll put it in all the website of the UN uh, so that they can be, have access to. Uh, of course, only UN staff will have access to that. Uh, agencies will exercise their role on that. Could you have such a briefing? Yes, we plan to have such a briefing on a regular basis. Weekly might not, might be challenging, but if you think that, uh, it will, uh, if there are any major development, we'll do it. But we plan to have it regular, uh, you know, regular briefing on that. The contact number of the counselors, once we have the, the, uh, the retaining, unretaining con, uh, contract, we'll inform you, uh, on, on that. But they are speeding up the process. And I know that this morning, both Dr. Mwinga, Stephen and Vashia are the meeting with and with the support also with the UN medical clinic. Thank you very much, we are also with you. We thank you for attending, thank you for, uh, your nice comment to the RC. It's a teamwork and all the UN head of agency and UNDSS and so. So this is what we have. Uh, so I just, uh, want to thank you all, we are really, it was highly attended. I want to thank also Stephen Vashia, uh, for allowing their team, Renee and Fidel to set it, this very important engagement. This is recorded, so you'll get everything. And, uh, I wanna thank also Elizabeth and Alfred, Lee and most importantly, our, uh, really hardworking, uh, COVID-19 coordinator, uh, Dr. Mwinga. Uh, if you really want to have a conclusion of that, don't panic, witness, vigilance, prevention, privacy and hope. And we are together to build the strongest way of making sure that we overcome this coronavirus. Of course, in strong partnership, the government of Rwanda. The government is doing an extraordinary good work in overcoming this, uh, coronavirus. So remain vigilant, stay tuned. Uh, we'll keep on providing through communicate all the measures that are important for you to know. But in the meantime, let me end by the prevention and general precaution. Avoid close contact with people who are ill with fever, cough or respiratory symptoms. Practice social distancing, keep one meter from others and develop an alternate greeting. Do not shake hand, hug or kiss. Wash your hand with soap and water for 20 seconds or sanitize your hand frequently using an alcohol-based hand wrap. There are two of the most effective measures available. Do not touch your face if unwashed and clean or disinfect your work area before use, particularly if you share equipment with others, using a regular household cleaning space or disinfecting wipes. Avoid high-density gathering, that's why we are doing it like this. Where you are in close contact with others for extended periods such as rush hour committing or other crowded gra, gathering, get a flu vaccination if in some countries. Uh, there is no need for well people to wear a mask. Okay? And, uh, keep well, we are here together to make sure that we are all safe, secure, stay and deliver for this country, for the people in Rwanda, leaving no one behind. First and foremost, be assured that our collective leadership is here to make sure that you are safe and secure, you, your family and your friends. Thank you for attending and thank you for your excellent comments. And thank you also for your very good, uh, and, uh, very high-level questions that helped us also finalize our business continuity plan and continuing, and contingency plan and continue taking the required measures to keep us all safe and secure. Don't panic, let's have hope overcome this coronavirus. Thank you so much, colleague, bye.
Merci beaucoup.
There you are. Merakoe, turi kumwe, abisi zeha mwe, nakibana nira. Thank you. Oh, you did not put that mid at all.
It was 22 who were waiting. They must have done it when we had started.
Okay, good job. Thank you, colleagues.